Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 8th, 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Eastchester. As our call to order and we start all our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so please rise.
... flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I usually go over the ground rules and before I call the roll, just to remind everyone that we observe Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Order. Tonight, we have nothing on for resolution. We have one item of old business and three items of new business. What that means for new business is that generally, the applicant will be given an opportunity to make their presentation. Your entire package has been marked submitted, so you don't need to read the entire package or the test for that matter. You can if you want, it won't really either hurt or help your application. And then, the board will have an opportunity to make comments and ask questions. And as a general rule, the matter is open to the public. And after that, there'll be probably another round of questions and comments from the board. That's for new business. So, also, by the way, because we've just come back from our meetings during the pandemic that were held by Zoom, we no longer now accept any correspondence once the public hearings are closed on matters. So, just as a reminder for those who are participating. Before we get into the roll call, actually, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 11, 2022 ZBA meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Cahill, and all in favor?
Aye.
And as a note, there was no February meeting. Okay, so for the roll call, let's let me know whether that you're ready to proceed. The one item of old business is the kids' corner application. 189 191, Brook Street is the applicant here and ready to proceed? Ready to proceed? Good. Okay. Under new business, item 2, 22-068 Dogwood Drive.
Yes.
Ready to proceed? Thank you. Number 3, 22-0752 Howard Avenue. Ready to proceed? Okay. And the last item is 22-08, that's for Sprague Road. Ready to proceed? Okay. Great. Okay. Now, let's get to the old business item and because it's been a while since you did the application, if you may, if you don't mind, if you could summarize the application, please.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ivy Rents. I am proposing a new construction at 189 Brook Street for the purposes of a childcare center.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, if you can, as the public hearing is still open on this matter, if you could just summarize any thing that you've submitted that is either supplementing or changing your application in any way.
Okay, I have a little bit of a PowerPoint. Is it okay, bud?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. So, let's start. So, this is the site, a view of the site as it is currently right now. I will be presenting tonight on the proposed new structure, the parking lot, the staff requirements, pickup and drop off, the driveway, and the travel pattern to the proposed site. Okay, so what we did previously, just to kind of give your recap, was the parking lot was vertical, if you can see it, and we only had three parking spaces, one, two regular parking spaces, and one ADA compliant space. There was a driveway, if you're facing the building, it's to the right. It was 16 feet wide, and it was for the purpose of entering, entering the site and exiting the site. The parking lot on this proposed plan was 42 in inches, I mean, feet in length, and 44 feet in width. The parking lot, the proposed building size previously was 3,333.97 square feet. It required seven site parking spaces. The site also, the building also had six classrooms requiring 12 teachers and one director. So, the total number of employee parking required for this site was 13, and I had proposed that 50% of the employees were taking public transportation. The proposed number of children for this site was 56, and there was a 10-minute pickup and drop-off intervals from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then from 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM. So, that was the old proposal. The revised site plan, which is what I just gave you tonight, was the revised site plan. The parking lot has now been changed to a horizontal position. It has four parking spaces, three regular parking spaces, and one ADA compliant space. It now has two driveways with an entrance on the right, that's 12 feet, and an exit on the left, that's 12 feet wide. The parking lot dimensions are 44 feet in width and 52 feet in length. The building, I'm sorry, I moved it back by accident. The building's size has been reduced from 3,333.97 square feet to, oh, God, I can't even see, 2,499.97, 94.7 feet. The proposed space is, oh, I'm in the wrong, sorry, I'm in the wrong, the proposed interior wall space is 2,296 square feet, and it requires five site parking spaces. The new building proposal has four classrooms, which would require eight teachers, including the director. It has eight, it requires eight parking spaces for the employees, again, with 50% of our employees taking public transportation. We are now proposing 40 to 42 children at the site, and during the peak times, which are 7:30 to 9:20, we have a 20-minute drop-off intervals, and then again at 3:40 to 6:20. So, now I'm going to speak to some details about the proposed building and the site. The proposed building reduced the size, the one we're doing now, reduced the size and moving the building back from 3,333.97 square feet to 2,499.4 square feet, which is a difference of about 834.57 square feet, or it's a 25% reduction in the size of the building approximately. What it did was change the rear setback. Our rear setback changed from 18.5 and 12 feet from the fire stairs and the balcony, which is a 6.66 deficiency, to 14.5 feet, which is 7, and 7.5 feet from the fire stairs is the new proposal, and it is a 75% deficiency. So, it increased the variance that we're asking by 13.34%. It also changed the site parking from seven required site parking spaces to five site parking spaces, which was a decrease of two parking spaces. It also changed our parking lot. We reduced the size of the building, so moving it back four feet gave us another 10 feet in the front, so it increased the length of the parking lot from 42 feet to 52 feet, and there was no variant, we weren't seeking a variance for that. It increased the available onsite parking spaces from three to four. That includes the ADA compliant parking space. It changed the one driveway which required you to go in and out, that was 16 feet, to two, which is, that are 12 feet in length. So, we have an entrance going in on the right side and then coming out on the left side, which is the exit. It also, because we changed the size of the building, it changed the interior floor plans. So, it gave us, instead of three classrooms where you can see previously proposed, it's actually the first floor, it says second floor, but it's actually the first floor. The first floor layout was three classrooms for infants and toddlers. Now, we're proposing two classrooms. We are still keeping the two ADA compliant bathrooms on that first floor. On the second floor, we are also reducing the classrooms from two classrooms to, from three classrooms to two classrooms. There will also be an office and bathroom for the children on that floor. So, let me just describe in detail what the changes of the floor plan did. It reduced the number of children present in the building at any time from 56 to 40 or 42, and I put 40 to 42 because the downstairs is a little tight. I think we're probably going to lose two children when they do the final measurements from the state. It also reduced the number of staff that are needed from 13 to eight, which is a 38.5% reduction. And the state, once you have a center under 45 children, will allow the administrative duties to be carried out by a staff member, so we don't need to have a separate director in this case. It also reduces the employee parking requirement from 13 to eight, which is also, again, a 38.5% reduction. Additionally, more than half of our staff take public transportation, so we, you know, obviously, we're reducing the staff that we currently have, but most of those staff, which is five, will take public transportation. So, we would need three parking spaces for our current employees. Okay. We're going to talk about the employee parking. So, we're using the site itself as the pickup and drop off, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But where we're proposing the employees to park is in the CVS permitted parking area, which I already have three parking permitted spaces there, and I've had for over a year. It is a walkable distance from the site, so if you see right here, this would be White Plains Road, and the employees would be able to walk across the street here and walk down to the site, so it is a walkable distance. It reduces the required number of parking spaces for the previously required was 20 parking spaces, 13 for staff, and seven for the site. We were proposing three, and we had an 85% deficiency. What we're proposing now is the 13 required spaces, eight for employees plus five for the site. We have seven for onsite, three offsite, and a deficiency now is six spaces, which is, or 53.8%, so an overall 31.2 decrease in what we were proposing before for parking. Other changes include our pickup and drop off, the traffic pattern, and the contract, so let me talk a little bit about those. The proposed pickup and drop off before was 10-minute increments, starting from 7 o'clock in the morning going to 10. What we're proposing now is during the peak hours, since we have less children, we can allow for 20 minutes going from 7:40 to 9:20, which is where most parents drop off. Usually, our parents are at work by 9 o'clock, so it starts tapering off by then. Also, our peak times started in around 3:40, which is usually after school. We have quite a few teachers that pick up after school, and then it goes until 6:20. That last 6:20 to 6:30 slot is usually staff children that are at the center, and they leave with their parents. Okay, so then, this schedule shows 39 possible drop off and pickups, not including that ADA compliant parking space, which some of our grandparents who would be dropping off would be using, or anyone else who would be dropping off that needs to use that space, we didn't count that. We also didn't account for children, parents who have multiple children, which are a lot. We typically have five to seven families that have more than one child at the center. In addition, previously, we proposed in our plan, a traffic study was done to indicate that there's also enough parking going, I guess that's going back west, down Brook Street, so there's metered parking if need be available during those times. Another thing that we want to address is that we will keep the actual traffic pattern that we're requiring parents to make that left on Dunwhitty, come around on Summerfield, make again the right onto White Plains Road, and then again turn on to Brook Street in order to drop off. One of the things that we've been able to add is called a GEO tracking system. It is a part of our protest system that helps us monitor tuition payments, things like daily attendance, those kinds of things. What this does, it is an app that the parents can load on their phone, and they can, they'll send out the code first thing in the morning. They are able to check their kids in. Once their children, once the car reaches 20 meters, 200 meters, which is about 650 feet, and as you can see, it is right in the area where we would be able to see them turning down Dunwhitty and going down Summerfield, so it allows us to see where the parents are in relation to drop off. And we also can see parents who are not dropping off appropriately. The other thing that we consider to address parent drop off is the contract requirements. We would put this language at the beginning of the contract, and these are the items that we would include, is parents traveling from the west towards the daycare center must travel using the following directions. A left turn on Dunwhitty Street, a right turn on Summerfield, a right turn on White Plains Road, and then a right turn onto Brook Street. Basically, you must go around the corner so that you, your vehicle is on the same side of the street as the center. B, parents may not park across the street from the building and cross in the middle of the road. And we would see them doing that because if their cellphone is on them, we can see them traveling across the street. Parents may not double park in front of the center. Parents must park in the designated drop off and pickup area and walk their children to the front door of the center. If parking is not available in the designated drop off and pickup area, parents must park in available parking spaces going west on Brook Street. Violation item, violating items A, B, or C on this contract will result in immediate termination of the contract and dismissal from the program. The above items will appear first on the contract to avoid parents missing them. We also require a signature for every item in our contract. We also highlight items that will cause the contract to be terminated, and this is really to address certain things like parents not being appropriately behaving at the center or children having some challenging behavior, payment lateness, and I do terminate contracts for violating my contract. The other thing I want to show you was our sight lines. This was done by Carlito. You can see the site, and our sight lines would probably require us to remove some of the parking directly in front of the building. We had previously went to Westchester County, and they had given us the parking space to the, if you're facing the building, the right of the driveway, but clearly, there's a different layout at this point, so we have to go back to Westchester County and request a review regarding this sight line pattern for the new building, proposed building. Okay. And lastly, I'm going to just show you the relationship Ray Place to our site. This is our site here. We just kind of superimposed it. We'll get a more formal drawing, but this was just an aerial view that Teresa Byer did in relation to the street Ray Place here coming down.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your thorough presentation. So, at this time, I just, actually, I should make a note that the public hearing is still open on this, but before we hear the public on this matter, I would like the traffic and parking expert, Phil Greeley, perhaps, if you don't mind, to come up and summarize your memorandum of February 23rd, please. And that memorandum is a part of the public record, but I think it's important for you to summarize it at this point.
Good evening. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We reviewed the most recent application, which Dr. Rents has described fairly thoroughly. We had a series of eight comments on the preliminary plan that was submitted, which now has a two driveway configuration, an entry driveway and exit driveway. On the last slide that she had shown gives the orientation relative to Ray Place, which was a question that we had raised. We wanted to, in the previous application, it was a single driveway, and there was an analysis done of that driveway as it relates to traffic coming in and out of Ray Place. So, with this new configuration, we felt it was important to see the positioning of the entry and the exit driveway. Number two is, you know, this needs to be reviewed by the county because of the change in the configuration. The previous application, they had provided general conceptual approval of the single driveway configuration, and again, at that point in time, there was a need for removal of some parking spaces to provide adequate site distances. There was a plan in the package from DTS that showed the current configuration and the sight lines that are required, and there will be a need to remove one or two on-street metered parking spaces to accomplish that sight line. So, again, that is something that the town board would be involved with, and it also needs the review from the county. In terms of the application, it was described tonight, but when the application came in, we weren't sure if the previous pattern for drop off and pickups in terms of, early on, we had concerns about people crossing Brook Street in this vicinity. You know, if they were coming from the west, they would tend to, you know, maybe park on the east side of, on the south side of Brook Street and cross. So, that was a pattern that we did not want to see. The previous plan did have a drop off pattern that anyone coming from the west would have to circulate the block so that they would be on the right side of the road to enter or to do the drop off. That was described by Dr. Rents. So, it's, you know, that was a question we had because it wasn't clear in the application if they were still planning to implement that type of a pattern. The other areas of concern that have to be addressed are the maneuverability into and out of the parking spaces. On the new plan, there are four onsite parking spaces. Before, all the pickups and drop offs were going to be on-street, and then the students walked in. This plan now provides the off-street spaces that would be used by the parents picking up and dropping off, and we, but we need to see the ability to enter and exit those spaces. It wasn't depicted on the plan. It shows the four spaces, but it doesn't show how that would function. I think the reduced plan in terms of the square footage and the number of students, of course, reduces the number of pickups and drop offs. The plan that's laid out does provide a schedule, but again, it's a schedule that would have to be enforced. Again, the staff would not be parking onsite. They would be parking offsite, as described. They have some parking permits for those who drive. So, you know, those are the main items. There's some cleanup in terms of the turning movements in and out of the site to make sure that the driveways would function properly, input from the county, the town board requirement in terms of the removal of on-street parking spaces, but that's, you know, pretty much what we've covered in the most recent application. The previous comments that we had in terms of the traffic volumes and accident reviews, those have been addressed previously, so it's more specific to this current plan that we would need additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Before you exit, let me just see if anyone from the board has any questions or comments of you. Mr. Cahill, anything for Mr. Greeley?
Yeah, I don't know if you can answer the question, but on the site with the new parking spaces and the placement, I don't see the turning radiuses to be able to get in and out of that, to turn the cars in that fashion of in one, across the other side. So, am I accurate? Am I not seeing that?
Yeah, so that's one of the items we requested, to see the actual turning tracks moving in and out of the spaces. You know, the plan, you know, shows the depth, but it doesn't show the physical movement. So, that's one of the items we requested, yes.
And then, you did say the county would have to approve the additional curb cuts, correct?
Correct.
Not the town?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I guess, it's not really a question for you, but I'll voice it here. I'm always concerned now with this new traffic pattern, you're putting cars in the neighborhood that weren't there previously. How are those neighbors going to be affected by this traffic of a car coming through every 10 or 20 minutes in the morning and in the afternoon? I mean, that's quality of life issue, as far as I'm concerned, for our residents, so I just put it out there.
Thank you for your commentary. So, nothing further, Mr. Cahill?
No.
Mr. Miller, do you have any questions or comments on Mr. Greeley?
No, actually, I didn't know if Mr. Greeley was going to comment on that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you about to comment on that, or did I cut you off?
Oh, in the, the pattern to pick up, to circulate the block was in response to a safety concern that was raised early on. Again, I think the number of vehicles, yes, they would be going through the neighborhood, but it was a plan in response to the safety of crossing Brook Street with the high volume of traffic there.
No, I understood that, you know, they addressed that concern, but it creates another concern.
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, and I appreciate the contract, I understand and the tracking and everything, but there's going to be, there's always one, you know, an in-law, there's something happens and someone takes the child to school, that's not familiar, so it could, you know, gum up the works on a couple of mornings.
Doctor, would you like to address that? Please, go ahead.
Okay. So, that was one of the reasons why we included the tracking, because I was trying to think of another way to account for human behavior, and one of the ways we can account for human behavior is, once they get in that perimeter, we can see, because they're clocked into our system, and we can see the traffic pattern and kind of intercept if there's something going wrong.
But my point is...
Before they actually make it to the building, which is kind of what I was trying to anticipate. The other thing I didn't get a chance to say was, we do have a staff person that would be out there doing those peak times, just to kind of help, because unlike other businesses where you have random people coming all the time, we really don't. We, it is a very set thing. We get kids some, as young as six weeks, and sometimes those kids stay with us for five years, so they get with the plan really quickly. Every year, we typically get the new pre-K class, so if you look at any, like, pre-K, the five-year-olds, which is the second classroom, the most new, the most children that we would get normally would be 12 children each new year, and that would be around August, September. So, it's not like all of this volume that happens in other retail situations.
That wasn't my point. My point was, I appreciate the tracking software, but there is going to be an instance where somebody doesn't have it on their phone that drops that child off. It's just going to happen.
I was telling you what the requirements are, right?
I understand, and I'm telling you...
We usually try to help our parents with that.
I'm saying in life, this is what happens.
Yeah, so we try to account for some of that because it came up before.
I understand. You did a good job with that piece of it.
Anything further, Mr. Cahill?
No, not yet.
Okay. Back to Mr. Greeley. Mr. Miller, anything?
No.
Mr. Nerzia, anything?
No questions.
Mr. DeMarco?
No.
Mr. Greeley, I don't have anything at this time, and ordinarily, because you've submitted your memo, and it's more submitted with the package, and you've made your presentation, but I'd ask if you don't mind if you could stick around a couple of minutes?
Sure.
Because the public is going to be heard, and we may need your expertise.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So, the public hearing is open, has been open on this matter, so if anyone would like to be heard from the public... So if anyone would like to be heard from the public on this application, let me know, and you can come forward, state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Good evening. Frank Sweeney, 22 Lakeview Avenue. We were before you in April with kind of the same issues or concerns. And I'll just outline them to you very briefly. But we're still concerned about safety with term of drop-off areas in terms of what we're talking about. By the way, we do appreciate the presentation tonight because there was an update in terms of where we were prior to. So we do appreciate that. In terms of the capability, we're still somewhat concerned about the drop-off, where, when, and how many, in terms of the volume that's going to be increased. I know it's been reduced from 56 to 43, which is a good thing. The thing from the traffic side is that, have we taken a look at the backup on Route 22 and going east on Brook Street? Is it going to be able to handle that right turn with the additional traffic that's going to be imposed? I'm not sure they can be changed at this point. But the idea is that you also need to take into consideration the impact of the new proposal on Ray Place. We're going to add another 20 residents to the area in terms of the capability. That alone is not going to allow them to make a left-hand turn, to go west on Brook Street. Not going to happen. I don't know if you've been up there between early morning and late afternoon. The traffic backs up way beyond Ray Place right now. So it's something that you need to consider. The other thing is that I know that they have some additional parking. Have we taken a look at the impact on other local businesses in the area? Does it restrict any of their parking in terms of the capability? Going east on Brook Street, coming up the hill... I know she's made an alternative suggestion that she used Dunwoody and Summerfield to go around the block and come back down to go west. But going east on Brook Street to try to get into the parking lot next to the actual pharmacy, it's going to be a nightmare. So if they choose not to use Dunwoody and Summerfield, traffic is only going to get worse. That's not going to happen. The idea is that whether the county will need to consider the traffic signals, the synchronization of the right-hand turn to go southbound on Route 22. Can it handle it now? I'm not sure it does. It's backed up all day long. I think it's an improvement to the building in terms of the aesthetics that are there now. It's a piece of rumble that needs to be considered. Does it fit into the community? Does it streamline it? Are they behind it in terms of capabilities or what it's going to have? Now, we wish her well in terms of trying to relocate her business and staying in town. But I think there's too many unknowns in terms of the relationship as it relates to traffic, safety, drop-off that I still not feel comfortable with. Everything has been put forward. I think they're trying to do their best job, but I think it's trying to jam a lot of stuff in a very small piece of property with a lot of traffic on top of it. And I'm asking you to consider, rightfully so, the impact not only of the school, the community itself, but the traffic coming east and west on Brook Street, which happens to be the major east-west thoroughfare in the north end of town. That is it. So I appreciate your courtesy and your consideration. I think it's something that probably needs a little more detail. And I'm concerned about whether the county is going to fly off on the reduction of the two parking spaces that they're requiring on Brook Street. And are we putting the cart before the horse? Because I don't know if that's going to be an option. Are they going to do it? We don't know at this point. But maybe if you go forward and you give it affirmative action, and they don't get those two parking spaces for the drop-off, then all of our efforts so far have been for naught. So all I'm doing is asking you to be cautious. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Sweeney. I appreciate your presentation. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. Charlie Callan at 21 Potter Place. And basically what Mr. Sweeney said, Frank, is something to consider. We, here in this great town and in our area, we had a great American patriot called Thomas Paine. And he wrote the book Common Sense. We... If I understood this correctly from the traffic engineer, if they did not... If the parents didn't comply and it was a problem, they would have to enforce it or do something? Who... If I heard that correctly, who is "they" to enforce it? I've heard the owner of the center say that they have strict regulations. How do we know if these are going to be enforced or not? How many warnings are going to be given out? Common sense. We have Brook Street, two lanes, one north, one south. Parents get backed up? Yes, we have. We were told we have a schedule of increments of, what, 20 minutes or something? What happens to somebody's lane, just as it was brought out before by one of the members? Common sense. It's going to back up. There's no guarantee on this. Route 22, we're all aware of it. If you're coming south on 22 and you're in a right lane early in the morning, maybe in the afternoon, too, what are people doing? They're turning right to go where? Most likely down to the Bronx River. And what street are they taking? Brook Street. People coming north, turning left into Brook Street. Where are they going? Brook Street to go to the Bronx River. You get a bottleneck over there. It doesn't take much to figure that out. That is going to be a problem. Oh, but then, we have a system now. If a parent comes up and goes up on coming from the west, they're not going to drop their children or park their car and take them across the street because now they're going to go all the way around. Really? When someone's late, they're going to do that? What are you going to do if they don't? Common sense. It's a great idea. It's a beautiful business to have, but not at this location. It's not the right place. A bigger place, bigger location, another street. Currently, I believe they're up in the shot and center now. That's a great place. You've got all that room to get in and get out and not stop in traffic. Here, you are going to stop traffic. And if you can convince me that it's not going to happen, please, help me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callan. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Okay, I'm going to leave the public hearing open for a reason. Doctor, would you like to reply?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
Would you like to reply to what you've heard?
I replied to a couple of things. So this was just a proposal. It wasn't a completely flushed-out idea because we wanted to just present some of our changes to the board to see because we had a lot of concerns the last time, and I really took them into consideration as to how could I get to a place that I thought was a happy medium and really looked at reducing the project at least by 30 to 40 percent in various areas. There are extensive traffic studies in the package done by DTS. As Mr. Greeley said, we also have some more studies to do based on the new proposed site. We didn't do that yet because we just wanted to put forth the new idea since it's been some time since the last time and then get some feedback as to what else we could do or need to do to address the issues at the site. One of the things that I wanted to point out is daycare is highly regulated. We are inspected ridiculously throughout the year, not only by the state, but by the local municipalities. So the fire department comes to our site every year. We have mechanical inspections. Our OCFS, especially considering that it's a new site, they typically come out three times a year. If ever we are in noncompliance at any municipality locally or for any reason, it does affect our ability to operate, the state does take away licenses if you are having a lot of noncompliance at the site. And they come out and investigate. If somebody were to say that, oh, you know, at the building department, we are having issues with her complying with parking and this, whatever... Those complaints are taken very seriously because they consider them as safety complaints. Anything that would be considered as safety... And Margaret knows we've had some safety issues I have brought to the building department at the site that we are now. One of the most crazy ones were the vultures that were landing on our playground. And the kids thought they were just big birds. And we have video of this. It was like insane to try to get... And part of that was because the playground was by the garbage cans, which once we realized this was just not a safe situation. And I went back and forth with the board for over a year to make sure that we could find a place for the kids to be safe. So I'm always about safety. I would never put children in a situation where it's not safe.
Thank you, Doctor. Mrs. Yuli, I'll take a moment now. I think what I'd like to do perhaps is get the feel of the board because it seems like the applicant may want to supplement her application as it relates to traffic and parking. And I think Mr. Greeley's memorandum and his presentation discussed an open, I guess, for lack of a better term, a blind spot on tracking and turning radius on-site. But let me see what the board thinks about that. And the public hearing, again, remains open. Mr. Callan, would you like more information on that?
Well, I think it goes beyond. I mean, we need that information for sure. And I don't see how they're going to provide that in a satisfactory manner because of the site plan. That's my opinion. But that said, we still have, now it's six variances, as I understand it, as opposed to five variances.
I think the sixth variance, I listed... We listed the variance with regard to the width of the parking spaces because that's what was shown on the plan. But I think if they were to come back, they could modify the plan so that those parking spaces were compliant.
We did actually on the one that I gave you because that was an error.
That was something that was pointed out.
So in any case, we still have five variances, which is a lot of variances, and they're not substantial. There's quite a few of them that are over 40 percent, you know? So that's really my concern. And again, you know, I appreciate everything they're trying to do to make this work and downsizing it, and the software investment and all that stuff is great. But this property is just a tough fit for this location with the parking. And that area is a tough location in general. I mean, we're having, you know, we gave an approval for a building that isn't up yet. That's to consider. I, you know, when I looked at the plan and drove around, I drove their route. You know, you're coming up in the morning, you're coming right into the sun. That's a tough left turn there with all the people coming down. Now you're in a neighborhood. Now you've got to go through the neighborhood and back up Summerfield, which is no joke. That's a steep hill. You know, to me, between the variances and just the traffic issues alone, I'm... I would... I don't know if they can make their case. That's where I'm at right now.
So you don't believe that you need any further information?
I don't need any further information.
Mr. Miller?
I have all the information I need. It seems as though the applicant may want to submit some additional information. Certainly give her that opportunity.
Okay. Mr. Nerzia?
Just to echo Mr. Miller's comments, yes. If you could submit additional information, that would be helpful.
Mr. DeMarco?
I'm good.
You know, I think what I'm going to do is... Not I think, I'm going to resolve. I think that I'll give you the opportunity to come back and present for more information, and Mr. Greeley can take a look at that. I'm not as far down the road, to use a metaphor, than Mr. Callan, but I was very concerned about the location because it's right at the T with Ray. And I don't know if anything different is going to change that aspect. But I think, not I think, I'm going to afford you the opportunity because you've put in a substantial amount of time and of thoughtfulness on this. I see that you've moved the parking for drop-off on-site. Of course, again, I want you to understand my reservation. Doesn't change the fact that you're at the T with Ray. If you had been at any other location, it would make that a little bit easier. And, you know, the other issue for me is that, you know, you make a great presentation. You know, I said to you when you first made the application, we can't consider the applicant. We have to consider the application. Because if we were to consider the applicant, your commitment to this community and the amount of time and thoughtfulness you put in would be sufficient alone. But my concern is the impact on the neighborhood. And I think that is maybe a tough one for you to overcome, but I'd like to hear what you have to say about on-site. But getting back to my other comment, your application is based on all of the suppositions being in the best-case scenario. And the problem is, there are people that are going to make a U-turn when they're in a hurry. And so, you know, when you come back and supplement your application with the tracking... Mr. Greeley, do I have it right? The tracking and turnaround and turn radius of the on-site. Okay? And anything else to supplement? Be more than happy to hear that. Mr. Greeley?
I used to buy only sugary fish.
Our attorney has spoken. So, Mrs. Yuli, do you have anything to add before I resolve to just keep the public hearing open on this?
I would just like to say one more thing. There is a childcare center about this size. It's parallel to the Bronx River Parkway as you make that right... I forgot what that street is. But there are like 39 kids, right?
Right.
Which we're proposing 40. They don't have any drop-off site. They don't have... They use the public streets for everything. And I drive by there just to kind of see, like, you know, what kind of traffic patterns. And they're not having... But a community and a main street. And they're not having nearly as much traffic as everybody thinks happens because they do really similar things that we do. Same population, same size. It's very similar in size.
That's been there for quite a while.
Yeah, it's been there for years.
Where is it?
Yeah, we've been open for 12 years, if you can believe it.
Is that on the corner of Scarsdale Avenue?
Yes, Scarsdale Avenue, right there, yes.
Frank Sweeney, do you know the name of that daycare center that's there? The name of the daycare?
It's called Children's Corner.
Oh, that's the Children's Corner. Okay. Yeah, that's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
I was just trying to make a comparison.
A stenographer's going to have a coronary with people speaking from all corners of the room.
No, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, okay.
I was just trying to say in size, like, if you want... It's a similar size that we're proposing, which is why I looked at that center as, like, how can I scale something down to meet a community-sized center, is what I'm saying.
All right. So we will take that into consideration as well. And I would ask, when you supplement your application, naturally, you're focusing on the tracking and turning radius on of on-site. But you can certainly add that and anything else. The public hearing's going to stay open on this. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this to the April meeting. Is there a second to my motion, Mr. Miller?
Second.
It's Catholic school rules. The one who's talking has to speak up. You ready?
Discussing the application.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Adjourn to the next meeting. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greeley, by the way.
Drop your glasses off.
Okay. First item of new business, this is 22-06. This is Dogwood Drive. This is item number two on our calendar. You could come forward, state your name and address for the record, and...
Hospital is in Spay Hall?
Of course. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Hi, Kevin O'Brien. I reside at 15 Park Avenue in Eastchester. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Roseanne Sarah, who is the trustee of the estate that includes 8 Dogwood Drive, working with Lewis Campana Architects.
Want to take the mic with you?
Take the mic with you, please. I'm sorry, counselor. I'm sorry, Counselor.
So, as I said, thank you, Chair and members of the Board. My name's Kevin O'Brien, working with Lewis Campana Architects, here on behalf of the applicant, Roseanne Sarah, who is the trustee of the estate that includes the property at Eight Dogwood Drive. It's her parents' residence. Her parents have passed, and we are here to ask for your approval of variances of two nonconforming conditions to facilitate a sale of the property by the trust. And I will quickly walk you through those. So, the house was built in nineteen sixty-two, shortly after it was acquired by the previous owner, the parents of the applicant. And in early seventies, approximately fifty years ago, they did a small addition to the northerly side of the house, trying to extend the small kitchen, add a little water closet. And, well, that extension extended into the ten-foot required side yard setback, creating the first nonconforming condition. And according to the original survey and the original plans, there had always been a concrete stair and walk that ran along the northerly side, which is necessary to traverse the pretty excessive grade change from front yard to rear yard. When they did that extension, it obviously pushed out the walk into the required six-foot setback for any uncovered concrete stairs, creating the second nonconforming condition. As I, to show you, you know, the addition doesn't run the entire length of the house, the side, nor does it go high. And as the grade change, it actually kind of works to start to conceal the small addition. It, the, the physical aesthetics of the addition, it's in accordance with the vernacular of the house and as well as the surrounding properties. And being in this condition for the last fifty years hasn't created any physical or environmental impact, and appears to have been constructed in accordance with the construction standards and at that time, and it's sound, it's intact. And while the, neither of these conditions exceed any of the limitations for building coverage or impervious surface coverage, it added approximately, like I said, sixty-six square feet to the single-story house. And obviously, these conditions were self-created by the previous owners, her parents, but now it's something being inherited by the trust. And so, we really appreciate your consideration tonight and hopefully to approve the variances for these two conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, and as mentioned, your application and your answers to the five-part test are submitted, and they're part of the public record. At this time, we'll see if the board has any questions or comments. Mr. Cahalan?
Yeah, just one. If the variance was approved, I would insist that it just be limited to this area so that the next owner doesn't blow it out in the back. That's my only comment.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
No comments.
Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
I have nothing at this time. I make a motion to open this matter to the public for public hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Nerzia, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Seeing nobody, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. DiMarco, do you have anything?
Still nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
No, sir.
Mr. Miller?
All good.
Mr. Cahalan?
All good.
Other than the condition that you requested?
That's it.
Okay, and I have nothing at this time. I think your presentation and your application speaks for itself as it relates to the five-part test, and certainly, you can't say it's not inconformative of the neighborhood since it's been there about a half a century. So, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn your application for resolution at the next board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item three on our calendar, second item of new business, Fifty-two Howard Avenue, this is twenty-two dash oh-seven. The applicant, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us what your application's about.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rich Delfino. I'm a homeowner right around the corner, Fifty-two Howard Avenue, and I am seeking variance approval to install an eight-foot vinyl fence in the rear. So, just to give you a little background, my backyard is where CVS is, right on the road there. And it's an eight-foot cement wall fence, not the greatest-looking fence. And I just really just want to clean up, you know, I'm staying in code with the six-foot sides. It's just that back wall that's eight feet, and to have the six feet, I'd still have like a good, you know, a decent amount. Actually, it's just about two feet, and I want to cover that. Just want to have a nice, clean, white vinyl fence. And that's what I'm here today for.
Thank you. And we have your application submitted and your reply to the five-part test, so let's see if the board has any questions or comments. Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
None.
Mr. Miller?
Nope.
Mr. Cahalan?
Nothing.
Before I make a motion to open the matter to the public hearing, I just want to support your application insofar as that the, a shorter fence would actually be an eyesore because you'd be looking at both the fence and the wall. The fence is really for screening of the wall. Is that correct?
Correct. Really just to cover it and not, just to make it look square and clean.
Okay, I make a motion to open this matter to the public for a public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
One in from the public like to be heard on this application?
I just want to make one comment that the neighbors at Fifty Howard Avenue did submit an email to you in one-hundred percent support of the application, so they asked that we really...
Thank you, Mrs. Yuli. Actually, I should have mentioned that. It's part of the public record, but it's important to note that you have support of your neighbors as well.
Oh, terrific.
So, seeing no one interested in coming forward and being heard, I make a motion to close this public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to the board. Mr. DiMarco?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Nerzia?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Cahalan?
Nothing.
I have nothing. I make a motion to adjourn for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Last matter on our calendar tonight is the third item of new business. This is Sprague. Name and address for the record, and proceed, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Diana Collet from the firm of Del Bello, Donnellan, Weingarten, Wise, and Whitaker in White Plains, New York. So, I'm here on behalf, tonight on behalf of Thomas Messina at Four Sprague Road, and also with me tonight is Marco Maiarano of Community Designs. So unfortunately, my client, Mr. Messina, could not be here tonight due to a last-minute conflict. I believe that you have met him in the past. He has been here a few times. And you may recall, as I said, that this property has been here a couple of times, and in particular, in February of 2020, your board granted a variance at that point to increase the impervious coverage to three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine square feet in connection with a proposal to extend the patio and for a proposed screened porch. So, at that point, and then 2021, my client extended the patio but decided against installation of that enclosed porch. Instead, he constructed a new wood deck and a patio extension, and there was a building permit issued for three thousand and fifty square feet. Since that time, there were a couple of developments. He did add some improvements to the property that he has since removed. I know he was before you a couple of times with regards to, you know, a shed and a hot tub, so all of those have been removed. Those are no longer on the property. So, what we are asking for is really very limited, and that is to legalize the existing patio and landscaping features at the property, actually with a slight reduction to the existing patio. And so, Marco's going to walk you through the plan, and then we can go through the rest of the application.
Okay.
That's all right.
That is fine. Proceed.
Marco Maiarano from Community Designs. So, our proposed design, it entails, along the rear property line, we intend on proposing new abrevieties, along with on either side, there's also evergreens, which are actually skip laurels. The area here in yellow, we intend on removing that impervious area, which is a concrete slab, along with a portion of the existing brick-paved patio. That amounts to about a hundred eighty-nine square feet. With that figure of the modified patio and a prior deduction of the patio, it amounts to six hundred and fifty square feet. So, for a fifty-year design storm, it would require two drywells, which are currently in place. We do have a continuous trench drain along the outside perimeter of this patio, which is currently connected to those two drywells. Our overall property impervious, proposed impervious area would amount to three thousand two hundred and ninety-four square feet. And I believe she had mentioned there was a prior variance back in February eleventh of 2020 that amounted to three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine square feet, so we're just under that number. In terms of drainage features, we also have, from a prior approved permit, there was a drywall that was installed, which I believe was, they intended on putting a roof covering over this rear deck, which was not done. So, we do have a spare drywall that's in place that nothing's connected to. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Maiarano.
So, we have submitted for your review a relatively thorough, I believe, statement of principal points that addresses both the interpretation that we're seeking as well as the area variance criteria, but there are just a few things that I'd like to call out from that, if I may?
Please.
So, the reason that we're seeking the interpretation in the first place is that in our application for the building permit, the building inspector has concluded that the wash stone, the gravel stone that my client has used for landscaping on the property is part of impervious surface under the zoning ordinance and has to be counted toward the impervious surface coverage. We disagree with that conclusion. We have submitted for your review an engineering analysis by billow engineering explaining why that is, you know, not the case, and that the loose gravel is not a gravel driveway, it is not a paved surface, and it readily absorbs water unlike those other surfaces. Also, as you can see from our submission and the agenda, that counting this gravel toward the impervious surface coverage makes it seem as if the variance itself is substantial, when in fact, it is not. It really is a very minor addition to the square footage that was previously approved, and in fact, it's substantially similar, as was mentioned, to the square footage that was previously approved in 2020. The relief that, and that really is the relief that we're ultimately seeking. So, the remaining criteria of the area variance and that analysis is essentially the same, and it's similar to what your board found in 2020. There is no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is plenty of screening. There is already existing stormwater mitigation measures that were installed as part of the prior approval that mitigate any stormwater runoff. There is no other feasible option for Mr. Messina because this is the only way that he could really be, really make use of his backyard, as I'm sure he's explained to you in the past. He's, there's been quite a bit of water inundation in the yard, and this was one way to address that. And so, what really, the only difference here is just a small addition of square footage to the patio. And again, so in the context, this is not a substantial variance, and really, there are no adverse impacts to the neighborhood. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up is that, as you recently had granted a variance to the next-door neighbor at Six Sprague for an impervious surface that, you know, is similar in terms of percentages, and, you know, and that was actually part of the reason for one side of the property having improvements with the wash stone and gravel is to match the next-door neighbor's improvements. So, you know, that's something that they, I don't know if you can see that from the plan. So, I mean, we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the, either the interpretation or the area variance.
Thank you, Counselor. So, just to clarify, because what you're doing and the way we're considering this is on two tracks, because we're going to hear your argument about the interpretation and that, depending on how we find that, it wouldn't be today, but when we resolve on that, it would really just affect the size of the area variance that you're seeking.
Correct.
I usually cut to the board, but I'd like to, I guess, cut to the chase. Why do you believe that the definition in our statute of gravel differs from the gravel that you're proposing?
Okay, well, sure. I mean, if, I mean, I could just cite from the actual zoning law itself, if you, the way that impervious surface is defined is any hard-surface man-made area that does not readily absorb or retain water. That's the first portion of the sentence. The second one is including but not limited to building rooftops, excluding overhangs, paved areas, and gravel or stone driveways and parking lots. That's the definition of impervious surface. This area that he has on his property, the gravel, the wash stone, we're not talking about the pavers, and we're not talking about the concrete, we're really just talking about the loose stone that he's got. And do you have photos of that? If you have...
If I may, Mr. Maiarano, just what I'm getting at is that we are essentially a quasi-judicial tribunal, and we're hearing an appeal, and you're making an argument that the statute that we're bound by is incorrect as it relates to your interpretation of gravel driveway. I'm trying to understand why that's different.
Sure. And so, I'm not saying that it's anything, we're not challenging your zoning ordinance. What we're challenging is the interpretation of the zoning ordinance by the building inspector, and correct you as the zoning board have the ability to review that and to make the determination that you believe should have been made in that case. So, the reason why, what we're saying is that what we have here, this loose gravel, is not a gravel or stone driveway, and that if you look at the first portion of that sentence, it's not a surface that does not readily absorb or retain, I mean, sorry, it's not, it is a surface that readily absorbs and retains water. Okay? And so, what we have submitted is the billow engineering report, which goes through and analyzes the fact that there is quite a bit of void space created with this kind of loose gravel that allows water to be absorbed and to penetrate. And so, this is not like a paver, this is not like the kind of gravel driveway or parking area that would be compacted and support, let's say, a vehicle or somebody walking. What you have here is stepping stones, and then you have essentially landscape treatment around those stepping stones. And so, that is not the kind of impervious surface that was intended with the language that's in your zoning code. And that's our interpretation, and we believe that that is the correct interpretation. That's, you know, I think to find otherwise would be an impermissible extension by implication of the zoning code, you know, to, it's, you know, zoning is, and then, you know, this is all in the materials that we submitted, but I can reiterate, which is that zoning is, you know, it's, zoning restrictions are interrogation of common laws. They have to be strictly construed. And so, your board cannot extend the meaning of, it has to look at the actual... And so your board cannot extend the meaning of, it has to look at the actual regulation strictly and cannot extend its meaning. And so that is what, and so, you know, I don't know if you have any questions about the type of gravel, you know, I think, I don't know if you've been to the site, but that's, it's essentially wash stone.
Right. So I just, I'm trying to, I guess, zero in on your actual argument. So you're saying that it's different from the statute, because this is a gravel area and not a gravel driveway? Is that what you're saying?
Right. We're saying it's not, and, but, but more, but more generally, it's, if you, if you read the full sentence of, the full definition of impervious surface, it is a surface that readily absorbs water, and therefore, therefore, it doesn't fall within the definition.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so I'm going to go to the board now for questions and comments, and again, we're wide-ranging here. It could be on the interpretation, it could be on the area variances. Mr. Cahalan?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
Nope.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes. I do have a question on, on the interpretation aspect of it. I know we're kind of parsing words on what this particular clause actually means, and I'm going to get geeky for a moment, but here's my question for you. The clause reads, "Any hard-surfaced man-made area that does not readily absorb." Then it goes into the including but not limited language. So I understand, you know, this is not a driveway, obviously, but you're saying it does not readily absorb. But on the next page, or on a page in your application, you're referencing an engineering report by Billow Engineering, and it describes what this voided gravel space does. But at the end of the explanation, it says, a certain amount of space, and it says, "The voided space clearly indicates that the rounded stone material has some level of permeability." Now again, I don't want to go crazy over this, but it says some level of permeability. Does that, is that the equivalent of does not readily absorb?
Well, I mean, so we don't have the author of this, of this report here, but I think if you look at the, at the next paragraph, though, of that same report, this is when they talk about, you know, that it's about the drainage and stormwater storage capacities and capabilities of the, of the, of the stone. I understand your point, but again, if you look at the void space, you know, if we're talking about the difference between mulch, or the difference between gravel, I mean, we're going to try to parse out which one is more permeable, there's, there's nothing in here that will, let's say, prevent mulch. But, but again, it's, I'm sure it doesn't have the same, the level of permeability, that's not what we're talking about. That's not, I mean, that's not the intent of impervious surface coverage restrictions. The intent is to prevent stormwater runoff. And so what, what I've, the point that I've made here is that this, this doesn't create additional stormwater runoff. And in this, in this instance, even if it did, we have already on-site stormwater management. So I think my point is that, yes, it goes to, and this is what the chairman said, is this goes to the, this goes to the size of the variance. So if, if your board is satisfied with what is being proposed, and the actual percentage that we're looking at, you know, is really what this interpretation is about, and so that's, you know, so I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that it doesn't, you know, in this context, it doesn't change the substantiality of the variance. But I hope, I hope I answered your question in terms of permeability.
Yeah, I think you're basically saying, if we can't have a meeting of the minds on what the definition is, then you're just saying that the variance request is not substantial.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Anything further, Mr. Nerzia?
No, no.
Thank you. Mr. DeMarco?
Nothing.
Can I make a motion to open this matter to the public? I'm sorry, Mrs. Yuli.
Do you mind if I just kind of respond to a couple of things, or point a couple of things out to you?
Please.
So I wanted to address two issues from the building department's perspective.
Go ahead.
One is, in addition to the definitions themselves, I did give you Section 2B6, which is general construction of language, and this says, "The word includes shall not limit a term to the specified examples," which now I'm adding here, "such as stone driveways or parking lots, "but is intended to extend its meaning to all other instances or circumstances of like kind or character." So I think from our perspective, even though this, yes, says gravel, driveways, parking lots, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't go on to say, "or gravel in a side yard, or gravel in a rear yard, or gravel in a flower bed," but it specifically cites gravel. And looking at the general construction of language, this specifically says, "It's intended to extend its meaning to all other instances or circumstances of like kind or character." So that's one thing I wanted to point out.
Sure.
The other thing that I wanted to say with regard to whether gravel readily absorbs water or not, I just think that there's, there's two issues here that are separate. When you prepare stormwater management plans, and you're, you're looking at surface coverage to get the kind of runoff coefficient, or runoff rates, or curve numbers, if you're doing a design. So, you know, a really hard pavement is going to have a run, more runoff than gravel, which is going to have more runoff than mulch, which is going to have more runoff than grass. So if you're really doing a detailed stormwater management report, you're looking at the various different types of land coverage to prepare a stormwater management plan, to ensure that you're accommodating for the runoff, you know, by sizing the drywells or whatever appropriately. So if you have an acre of property that's all pavement, you're going to have different runoff rates than if you have a parcel of pavement, an acre of property that's woods and grass and some gravel. So, so you're looking at the coverage in order to do your stormwater management calculations. That's one issue. But in all honesty, you can design for that most likely, if it's all pavement, or if it's a variety of surface covers. I think in this instance, it's not so much about whether you can design for the stormwater management, because that I think you can do under any circumstances. It's looking at green and lawn area versus hardscape areas, and what's defined as something that, you know, a hard-surfaced man-made area, and what that looks like sort of aesthetically, so that you, if you were to interpret this as allowing gravel as an impervious surface, as, I'm sorry, as a pervious surface, technically, someone could gravel their entire property, and would still have to perhaps do a stormwater management plan for it, but they would have zero green space or lawn or landscape area. So I think there's, there's two different ways to look at impervious surfaces. One, under any circumstances, you have to design regardless of the surface type for stormwater management, whether it's grass or mulch or whatever. But then there's this other kind of perspective, where it's talking about a balance of greenscape, you know, greenscapes and hardscapes. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuli. So would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Public hearing. You have to open them, Yuli.
Yeah, I think you started, and I interrupted you.
That's what happens, this is what happens when you get older, you don't remember your motions. So I think I made a motion, but I don't think I did. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
A second.
Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
So, now that the public hearing is open, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You may have to say it twice, so I can retain it, apparently.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, zoning board of appeals members, Mrs. Yuli. My name is Peter Telesco. I live at 892 Post Road. My backyard abuts, my side yard abuts the backyard of the property in question tonight. So I'd like to first start by saying, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Once again, we're here tonight because my neighbor feels that it's easier to ask for forgiveness than rather permission. Much of the project before you was done illegally without proper permits or inspections. This was done after receiving variances and permits to complete a project of a smaller scope, which in itself seems rather devious, and has caused extensive damage to my property. We are now into our third year of this madness. How did this happen? The approved project was completed, a call was made for final inspection, and after receiving the CO, we start up again for Plan B? It's not acceptable. I'm here to defend my rights and property. I have photos which will show you the natural slope of the property, photos that will show the vast majority of this lot is stone and structure. My guess would be 75% of it is. I have videos that show water coming through and around the retaining wall onto my property, causing extensive damage, as well as financial and physical hardship. My main concern in January of 2020 was not that 4 Sprague Road was requesting variances, but how this work would affect my property with regards to water runoff. 4 Sprague Road is at a higher elevation than I am. Patios, as we all know, are always pitched away from their home. The combination of the slope of Sprague pitching to their backyard leads that water directly to my property. 4 Sprague Road is 5,525, 26 square feet. As we speak, over 4,300 of it are stone or structure. That's almost 79%. Environmentally speaking, this is sheer madness. My greatest fear has been realized. I have videos that'll show the water rushing onto my property and also my flooded basement. The contents of my basement were destroyed and significant damage was done to my home. Who knows how bad it would have been if I didn't use a three-inch trash pump to stem the tide? I have lived at 892 Post Road since 2001. I had no issues with water runoff from 4 Sprague until 2021. Included in those years were the 100-year storm of 2011 and Superstorm Sandy. And as I said, no water. Then the entire backyard and both side yards of Sprague Road became stone, and within a year, I flooded. Coincidence? I don't think so. There are two additional homes on Sprague, and I'll get to one of those in a minute also, whose rear yards abut my property, and no water came onto my property from either. What's the difference? They have green backyards, not stone. There is much discussion today about impervious surfaces and their environmental impact. Having attended a few of these meetings in the last couple of years, I know full well that it is a subject which is not taken lightly by the members of this, of this board, nor the Town of Eastchester government as a whole, and the Building and Planning Department in particular. The most obvious concerns are stormwater runoff and stormwater management, neither of which should be taken lightly. Another, which in my opinion is just as important, is the effect it has on green space, specifically the lack of green space it causes. On a property that is 78.9% stone and structure, where exactly is the carbon sequestering taking place? Where is the oxygen being produced? How is the CO2 being absorbed? I don't know of a stone that can absorb water, produce oxygen, absorb CO2, or cool an area. Can we as a community afford to set this precedent? Please look at the photos I'm going to show you and the videos to see what I am left to deal with. I implore you all to pretend for the moment that these were taken from your property. I do not think there is a person in this room who would find this acceptable. In closing, I must say, I'm angry, I'm tired, and I'm confused. This applicant tried to legalize this patio in May of 2021. The application was denied in June of 2021. No part of the patio has been removed as of yet. How is this possible? Now can be resubmitted? When is enough enough? I'm being forced to live in fear of the next storm. In January 2020, a plan was submitted to the zoning board of appeals for consideration. I believe the plan submitted included inaccurate drawings and descriptions of the property. It did not correctly depict the amount of stone and structure on this property. In fact, this happened more than once. The fact that your decision on the original variance was based on inaccurate information should render that decision null and void, in my opinion. I would like to take this opportunity to show you photos, photos and a couple of pictures, but I would also just like, this was not in my written statement, the fact that number 6 Sprague Road was brought up, that in itself is deceiving. I attended that meeting, when he, when he was seeking variances, and it was said very clearly that without the easement driveway on the side of his house, which he has no use for, he doesn't use it, it's not part of his property, really, it's his neighbors' to use back and forth to their driveways, they're almost 10% under the maximum impervious surface requirement. And now you're lumping that in with this? They don't have a stone in their backyard. It's all grass, and they've got a deck on the back of their house. How can you compare this to that? They're apples and oranges. That, that argument doesn't wash, that washed, that's horrible. That's a terrible, terrible comparison to try and make. And now I got myself all aggravated, and I forgot my second point, so maybe I'll just show you the pictures, and if it comes to me.
Take the microphone, please.
All right, so first, what I'd like to show is, this is what you see from my backyard. This fence blocks a retaining wall. This is the top of the retaining wall, and at the highest end, you can see turf is even with the top of that. Then what happens is that runs down my property. You see, it's a dual-level wall. This is the grade. This is the grade of Sprague Road. So it gets lower, 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 and it ends here at the end of that property. This is just a parapet, a fake wall. This is a beautiful patio, isn't it? Where's it pitching? It's pitching this way. Here's the step, that's part of the patio. It's pitching this way, meaning all that water comes here. And you'll see what it does when it comes here. I'll show you that. But as to the screening we heard so much about, where? Where's the screening? I see nothing. The only screening here, I planted. I don't see any screening. So another statement that's not necessarily correct. So this is June of 2019. That's the original backyard. These are the plans that were submitted for the 2020 meeting. This is what the proposal is. Well, they're showing grass, they're showing grass, but you clearly see, this is not grass here, these are stone. So my contention is, and this happened again here, and then it happened again here. How many times does it have to happen? How many times are you going to be given inaccurate information? You're basing your decision on an impervious surface variance on this, when in fact, this is the truth. And I contend that if you saw this, you may not have said yes to that original variance, and I think that needs to be considered. And these are just more pictures of the slope, how everything slopes, everything slopes, and this is what we're left with now, all stone. 75% of this property is stone. An interesting statistic is, if we get an inch of rain on a 50-by-100 lot, and I know this is slightly larger than that, but an inch of rain on a 50-by-100 lot will dump almost 3,200 gallons of water onto that 50-by-100 lot. If half of it's coming into the backyard, which is all stone, that's 1,600 gallons of water. Where is it going? It's making a beeline right to my property. And again, if, if I could show you a video, I'll show you what it looks like coming into my property. And I'll show you what my basement looks like when you can go swimming in it. And I can't live like this anymore. I cannot live in the next, in fear of the next storm. So is there a way I can show a video?
I'm not sure if we're capable. Gary?
I have my laptop. I'm not really sure what to plug in.
That's the HDMI.
Okay, let's see.
Gary, is there anything else necessary?
So the first video, this is coming out of the weep hole, and pouring through.
Mr. Telesco, can you hold on one moment, please? It's not playing.
It's not playing yet.
It's not playing yet.
All right, that's the water coming through the weep hole, through the holes in the wall, into my side yard. Okay? That's unacceptable. I don't, there's no one in this room that would tell me they want that to happen to At the end of the retaining wall, this is what's coming into my yard. That's not normal runoff. That doesn't happen if there's grass there. That's either being pumped onto my property, or it's coming down there like a waterfall. That's not acceptable. I can't stand here and accept that. And then, you know, just for, okay, this is what I'm left with, the contents of my basement destroyed. I, you know, I don't know what else I have to say. If these pictures don't speak volumes, I don't know what does. That thing needs to be ripped up, it needs to be thrown out, and he needs to have a grass backyard like he should. And the other point I wanted to make earlier was just, and Mrs. Yuli brought it up, is to ask now that the town of Eastchester consider gravel a pervious surface, we don't want to open that. That's a slippery slope. You will then risk having 50 by 100 lots, nothing but stone. Acre lots, nothing but stone. We need green space. We need green space. Impervious surface requirements are just as much about green space as they are stormwater runoff. And I don't ever think that could be overlooked. That being said, I want to thank you all for your time and your service to the community. I want to thank you all for listening to me politely, and have a good night.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Telesco. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please speak freely.
My name is Jason Malik. I'm the homeowner at 6 Sprague Road. I was here a few months ago with the variance application for our screened-in deck. So I don't, I'm a lawyer. I'm not a land use lawyer, though, so I'm only going to testify or talk about the facts and the way that I see it. For once, I'm not going to offer any interpretation of the statute or things like that. With respect to the dispute regarding the gravel and the stonework that's between our homes, I can tell you absolutely it is a pervious surface. It is the opposite of an impervious surface. I don't know if the picture was designed.
Can you take the microphone with you, please? Not going to be able to pick it up for the stenographer, thank you.
So just to be clear, I don't take a position one way or the other on the application by 4 Sprague. I don't oppose it, I'm not. I don't discount any of his concerns. I appreciate what he's saying. I'm not taking a position any of that. I haven't read the papers or anything along those lines. So I'm only here to talk about the side yard that separates 4 Sprague and 6 Sprague, and the stonework that's between that. So if...
Bottom of?
There we go. Yeah, there it is. So when we moved into this house, we're on the left, they're on the right, Messinas are on the right. When we moved in, there was grass here, it was basically the same grass here, and just extended upwards. Every time it rained, we had puddles. It was mud, the water would run, it would pool up over here, and basically it would just be a disaster. We put in, it was a joint project between the Messinas and I, we hired a landscaper and we asked them, what could we do to improve the drainage and the absorption? And this is what they recommended. This is gravel here, and there's some paving stones that help you walk across the gravel, but the vast majority of it, and this picture is actually a little bit deceiving because you're looking at it from the, you're looking at it from this angle, and this bush, you know, blocks a lot of it. The vast, vast majority of this is small stone, not the pavers that you see. Okay? The pavers are just to walk through it. And ever since we installed those stones, the absorption of the water has been perfect. So perfect that when we had those terrible rainstorms last summer, when we had the tropical storm that caused the flooding, I had some flooding in my basement, mostly from the front, from the street, water came down my driveway and into my garage to the basement. But that was the one area of the yard where we did not have any flooding, because the stones absorbed so well. So to the extent that the statute is ambiguous or vague as to whether stonework is pervious or not pervious, I can tell you that it's absolutely pervious in the circumstance. So again, I'm not taking any position as to the rest of their application and the pavers behind, but I can tell you with respect to the stonework that's between our two houses, there's no question that it, in my view, it shouldn't be counted toward their impervious surface, because it absorbs the water, and it does it perfectly.
Anything further on your presentation?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, please.
Okay, so thank you for your comments. A couple of things. One is, I just wanted to point out that the front yard of this property is grass, and also that we are adding, I don't know if you can point out to the locations, but we are adding trees, and as part of our, as part of our proposal, we're adding trees, shrubs, and grass and green area back into that yard. Okay? So that will provide additional...
Let her finish. Please, proceed, I'm sorry.
So that will provide additional, that will provide additional screening, it will also provide additional greenery. With respect to the question of whether impervious surface is for purposes of green space or it's for purposes of stormwater management, respectfully, if the town was interested in preserving green space, then there should be a specific provision that specifically, that states that there has to be a certain amount of green space, grass, however you want to define it, within the yard, and not use the impervious surface definition as a way to accomplish that. That is, that's not the purpose of it. It really, there is no difference between the stormwater management purpose and the zoning purpose. It really is for purposes of ensuring that there is no stormwater runoff that's going to, you know, that's not going to be mitigated. And so, and so here, I think what, sorry, I'll just show you again. I don't know when those videos were taken, I don't know what the dates were and when that happened, if it happened prior to this, but as Mr. Marano had pointed out, there is a trench drain that runs all around here, and its purpose is to catch the water. It also, the gravel itself also works to, is it, well, it's a type of landscaping treatment that's not going to block up the drain, unlike something that might have either leaves or mulch. So it actually is a preferable material for that purpose. And so, you know, as far as, as far as, you know, any sort of violations that may have happened on the property previously, you know, we've worked really diligently with the building department. He, you know, Mr. Messina was not represented by council, you know, previously. We have come back, we have, we have done quite a bit to, to remove any existing violations from the property. This is a very, you know, what we're presenting here is substantially the same square footage that was approved previously by the board. And so we think that this is really a very minor request in the context. And we are addressing the grass, the additional greenery that I know is a concern for the neighbors. And so, you know, it really is not, it's in the backyard, it's not very visible. I understand that it's visible to this one neighbor, but we, you know, I think we've done quite a bit to ensure that everything remains in compliance, and that's why we're just asking that this be legalized.
Thank you, Counselor. Before we go to the board for any questions or comments, I have a question. Perhaps you could highlight the difference between the percentage of variance that you're seeking, depending upon whether your proposed product is determined to either be pervious or impervious?
Sure. So, I know that we did our own math in our application here, but, and I know that in the agenda itself, there is a very helpful breakdown of what the difference is. So as you can see, the, if it's the gravel areas on the property are considered to be impervious surface, then, then the, then the variance is at, calculation is 51%. Whereas if it's not considered to be impervious, if it's considered to be pervious surface, then the variance is 19.2%. Now again, that's if you're going back to the 2,763 square feet, which is the 50% that's permitted under the zoning code.
Right.
As you know, and in the notice of denial, there is a recognition that the 3,050 that was already constructed on the property is what's currently there. So if you, if you take the difference from the 3,050, that's even less of a variance. So.
Thank you for the comparison. That's what I wanted to illustrate. Mr. Cahill, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I got plenty of comments.
Okay, would you like to make them, then?
I would.
Please.
I mean, I know this attorney wasn't here, your client's never been here. He's never shown his face in this room through the whole application. Let's be honest.
I think he's been here twice.
He hasn't been here once. I've been here every time. He's never shown up. He sent the architect both times before he hired a lawyer.
Mrs. Yuli, do you mind?
We can go back and review that.
Okay.
But I'm, I gotta, I'm not that old yet. Don't let the gray hair fool you.
Well, listen, I'm not, I'm not an advocate, so I'm just trying to correct the record.
So all I'm going to say is, this, we gave a variance for a specific use. He totally disregarded the use. He did what he wanted, he created what he wanted, and he came back for forgiveness. And we denied him. And now here he's back again because he doesn't want to take care of a condition that he created. So the argument about pervious or not impervious, I'm with the building department on this. I'll say it right now. I believe their interpretation is correct, and I hope the rest of you gentlemen follow that interpretation. That said, the area that they're presenting is, you saw the video, you saw the pictures. It looks really wide, it's a very small area. That French drain, if it is a French drain, is not doing the job it's supposed to, based upon what we just saw. It's running off somewhere. It's not catching what it's supposed to catch. So whoever did the calculations, they may be right, but there's a functional problem there because Mr. Telesco has a real issue. Okay? As far as 6 Sprague, total different application, I don't even know why it was brought in tonight. Okay? Doesn't help their application at all, as far as I'm concerned. The facts are, is that this applicant has been here three times, and has still not taken what we have given him as far as what he's supposed to do. And again, he's here asking for something more, in my opinion. So that's my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Mr. Miller, any questions of the applicant or any comments?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
No.
Mr. DeMarco?
No.
I don't have anything at this time. I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahill, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next board meeting, and at that time, there'll be a resolution determining both the interpretation question and the area variance application. Thank you for your application.
Okay. May I just inquire, is there, I don't know, some boards do it this way, if there's a, if there's a way to get a sense of the board, or is this something that you're going to hold over until, until next week?
Well, what we do, which is, we've been doing actually for several years now, and it's in conformity really with most boards in the county and good practice, is that we deliberate, we make our comments and ask our questions on the record, and then we make our determination after deliberating upon it at the next meeting. Okay? Is that, did I answer your question, or?
No, that's, yeah, I just wanted to see if that was, you know, if there were any other, okay, that's fine.
We're not the village at our town, we're not going to tell you what we're going to do.
And also, just to be clear, even though maybe you were, you're not going to deliberate on it at the next meeting, you're just coming in with a vote.
Correct. What I mean by deliberate is that we reflect on the application. We don't make a decision based immediately upon the application's presentation the night of the meeting, which is what most boards do, actually.
And we won't talk to each other about it because it's not in the public record.
Yes.
No, no, that, I wasn't implying, I was just, I was just asking whether, you know, because sometimes some, some members are willing to give a sense of the board, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time and your presentation. Okay, having no further business before us, I make a motion to adjourn for the April meeting. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.